Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Today is December 6, 2022. Please stand for the badge.
... two to the flag of the United States of America, to the freedom of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Okay? We're going to do roll call. Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Angenga. Trustee Adesobe.
President.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Lency.
Here.
Trustee Kerwin. Trustee Redd.
President.
Trustee White. President Saunders.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you.
Communications from the public? There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak; up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may be immediately respond to a speaker's remark. Our first speaker tonight is Juanita Thomas. Juanita Thomas? Nope. Our next speaker tonight is Evelyn Torres. Evelyn Torres? Our next speaker tonight is Janine Fertile. Janine Fertile? And our next speaker is Tom Keller. Tom Keller? Okay, that's it for public comments.
Thank you. We'll go right to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we are going to do at least three presentations. Now, listen, they're very short. I saw the president looking. I thought, I saw the president looking at me, but she said it's only two. I said three. The other, the last one was two of our basketball entrepreneurs athletes, and they want to share with us tonight what they do when, in order to create, not to create violence. So it will be for us five-minute presentation. You're going to love it. So that's not, that's not, it's about our scholars. So let's get together with the, with the two other presentations. The first one is going to be about our reading scores, and I know one of the trustees has asked about reading scores and what it looks like in the district. And also, and the other one will be on special ed, and they are short. They are short presentations, but I just want to let the public know that we, we are listening to them because this request came from the public for the special ed information. And what, the first one is about the reading scores that came from the, from the trustee. But I want to say that we have a long road ahead of us, and we have just to focus on what we have to do for kids. So without further ado, I have the CNI department, the new CNI department, and I'm going to hear from Mary Rhodes and Mary Beth Rhodes, sorry, Mary Beth, and Mr. Doggett will come on later, who are going to present about the reading scores. And then Dr. Kim Smith and Ms. Carol Delvailler will do the presentation on the special ed. But please focus on what we are going to do to make it better. Okay? So with that said, Mary Beth?
Okay. While we wait for the PowerPoint, good evening, board members, Dr. Bennett Conroy, district administrators, and the Mount Vernon City School District community. This evening, I will be presenting on our K-8 reading scores. We will look at what determines a reading score, what we do with that information, and that, and what interventions we have in place here in Mount Vernon to help our students who may not be reading on grade level. Next slide, please. It wasn't working. Oh, thank you. So understanding our reading scores, so what is a reading score? To determine a reading score, we look at a couple of different things. We look at the skills that students should be able to do once they reach a certain grade level, and we look at the rate in which those skills are developed. We also measure reading progress. Reading progress might look like reading comprehension, fluency, and accuracy. With this information, we learn a little bit more about our students. We learn how well they will comprehend information in a text, and how readily available they are to pick their own reading materials at their own independent level. So we look at Lexile measures, we look at running records, and we look at guiding, guided reading data. We look at multiple data points to determine a student's independent reading level. Okay, now it's not working. Can you go to the next slide? Thank you. Here's a sample of what a second-grade student should be doing if he or she is on grade level. For example, a second-grade student should be able to read more complex words, two syllables or more, read common words with prefixes and suffixes, read various texts, fiction, nonfiction, fables, and poetry, and be able to understand the who, the what, the when, the where, the why, and the how within a text. Students in the second grade should be able to make connections within and between texts, as well as they should be able to read with accuracy, pace, expression, and comprehension. Next slide, please. So here in Mount Vernon, we use two different types of assessments. Our kindergarten and first-grade students are assessed using DIBELS and TRC, which is Total Reading Comprehension, Text Reading Comprehension, and we use IREDDI for grades two through eight. Next slide, please. Oh, perfect, thank you. DIBELS and the TRC assessment are perfectly designed for our early elementary students because these assessments assess those early literacy skills, such as letter naming fluency, first sound fluency, phonemic segmentation. Again, these assessments are for students who are five and six years old because they're most appropriate at determining those early literacy skills. Next slide, please. This is kind of small, so I'll explain everything to you that's on the slide here. This is an example, this is a piece of data from our kindergarten assessment with DIBELS and TRC. Currently, we have 46% of our students in kindergarten who are at or above grade level. It's all the way to the right in the blue. We have 16% of our students who are approaching grade level. We have 38% of our students who need intervention, and I'm going to get into the intervention a little bit later on in the slide. But if we look at those different colors and we determine what types of intervention are best for students at their independent level. So we have to make sure we're supporting our students who are above grade level, and we also have to make sure we have interventions in place for students who are below grade level. Next slide, please. This is our first-grade data. We have 30% of our first graders who are at or above grade level. 15% of our students are approaching grade level, and 55% are in need of intervention. Next slide, please. So we just reviewed the kindergarten and first-grade assessments. Now I'm going to move into IREDDI. We use IREDDI for our students in grades two through eight. And again, we use this assessment instead of the TRC and the DIBELS because those assessments are specifically for early literacy skills. With IREDDI, we're looking at different types of domains, such as phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, literary comprehension, and informational comprehension. IREDDI is an adaptive program and assessment for reading and mathematics, and the teachers use this information to personalize and individualize instruction. The assessment is given three times a year. We've given the assessment once, the beginning of the year assessment. Here is our data for our students in grades two through eight. We have 26% of our students in grades two through eight who are on or above grade level. We have 74% of our students in grades two through eight who are below grade level and who need intervention. Next slide, please. So we looked at what a reading score is, what we do with that information, and we looked at some of our data, the data that we have at this point in the school year. So what is our plan of action? What are we going to do for students who need those interventions? So again, we will assess, we assess once, we will assess two more times in addition to teacher-created assessments. Our teachers will continue to review and analyze data that they collect via assessments or within the classroom, and teachers use this information to make informed decisions about instruction that might be small group instruction, there might be tiers of intervention, and it might involve the RTI process. And lastly, we have two new initiatives in the ELA department. As part of our improvement plan, we have Foundations and Balanced Literacy, and I'm going to go over each one of these bullets in the next few slides. Here's a sample of a data review and goal-setting document from Hamilton Elementary School. In this document, the teachers have identified different goals for each tier of instruction. For example, Tier One and Tier Two occur in the classroom with the classroom teacher. So that teacher begins with a skill, has the student, the students practice the skill, the students move into some kind of independent reading, there might be a guided reading portion, but again, that happens within the classroom. Tier Three is when our reading specialists get involved. Tier Three, our students are pulled out for a different type of intervention. And the goal, for example, one of the goals that we have for our Tier Three students, students will perform at 50% or better on remaining ELA standard-based assessments, whereas our Tier Two students, the goal we have is 70%, and our Tier One is 80%. So teachers use this document to keep track of the interventions that they have in place, they comment, and then they make revisions. So once we see something is working, we can continue, or we can move on to something else. Next slide, please. RTI, our Response to Intervention Process. This is in all of our schools. And again, just to highlight the Tier One and Tier Two classroom teacher portion, and then the Tier Three with the reading specialist. This involves progress monitoring and certain strategies and interventions based on student progress. This is ongoing, it is not a one-and-done. The students are constantly working with the teachers, and the teachers meet on a regular basis to discuss student progress. Next slide. Here's another piece of data from Hamilton Elementary School. This is a sixth-grade document during their, this is what they use during the RTI process. And for example, during the sixth-grade meeting, the teachers determined the following skills that they are going to work on: vocabulary comprehension in the form of informational text or literary text. And again, they use this tool when they need to discuss student progress, they comment, they make notes, and then they decide what interventions need to change, what needs same place. Next slide, please. And lastly, as I mentioned, we have two new initiatives in the ELA department this year. These two initiatives will help our students who are below in reading. Foundations is a phonics program. It's for grades K through three. We are in year one of implementation. It is a multi-sensory and systematic phonics spelling and handwriting program. With this program, with our, with the program, we have a PD plan in place for our teachers. So far, they have received seven hours of professional development. They have another professional development coming up on December 14th, and then an additional four sessions. The daily lesson within a Foundations lesson is about 30 minutes, and it consists of three to five different activities. These activities address different skills, again, looking at those early literacy skills. Balanced literacy is in, for our students in grades K through eight. Again, we are in year one of implementation for balanced literacy. This is a literacy approach that integrates reading, writing, and word study. As we know, we have to have a balanced approach, we can't just focus on one. Our PD plan consists of the superintendent's conference days. So far, our teachers have had seven hours of training for balanced literacy. Their next session is on December 14th. Right now, our teachers are focusing on the mini lesson within balanced literacy. The teacher begins with whole group, the teacher explicitly teaches a skill or a strategy, and then the students move to the independent reading portion or the guided reading, reading portion at the instructional level, and then it finishes with conferencing and small group. That concludes our presentation on reading scores in Mount Vernon, where we are and the interventions that we have in place. Thank you.
Mary Beth, I believe some trustees have some questions.
Yes, I'd like to know, what are the scores for the students in the various schools?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What are the scores from the test, from the various schools?
Those are the scores for all of the schools. You mean individual schools?
Yes.
I can share that information with you. I don't have that information with me tonight. I just did an overview of all the grade levels.
Of the program in the school, but you didn't speak to the results of the programs?
The IREDDI scores and the DIBELS scores?
For the schools.
Yeah, that, those are all of our schools combined, those percentages?
But I'm saying individually, what are, how are they testing if we have such low scores, right? I know the pandemic has created an issue, so how are we improving the scores from last year? You're saying this is the first year of the institution of this program?
Yes.
This is the answer to those problems from last year?
Yes, so we, we will progress monitor, progress monitor our work with Balanced Literacy and Foundations to make sure our students are reaching those gains, to make sure our students are reaching those goals, and it's a constant process of reassessing and reevaluating. So we know the work that we have to do, and we believe that with Foundations and Balanced Literacy in place, we can help those students increase in their reading levels.
What about the science of reading?
The science of reading.
Position of language, does that, balanced literacy, take into consideration that for reading?
Balanced literacy is a little bit different from the science of reading, but both are a balanced approach because we know we cannot teach reading skills in isolation. We have to look at reading, writing, and that word study piece, which is so important, and that's why having Foundations this year is great for our students.
So in the, the levels that you were talking about, 74% below grade level?
Yes.
This is the answer to that?
Yeah, yes.
What do you hope to accomplish in this year with this program?
We hope to have 70% or more of our students increase at least one or more grade level in reading.
How is that? How many reading specialists do they have in each building?
I can share that with you. We have a total of 30 reading specialists. I can break it down by building for you if you would like.
Yes.
So Trapp Hagan has one, Benjamin Turner has one, Columbus has two, Denzel Washington has one, Edward Williams has three, Graham School, two, Grimes, two, Hamilton, two, Lincoln, three, Mandela, two, Mount Vernon Honor Academy has two, Parker has two, Pennington has two, Rebecca Turner has one, and Trapp Hagan has one. I know this is a K-8 presentation, but just to share with you, the Mount Vernon Steam Academy has one, and Mount Vernon High School has two.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that I do want to reiterate is that this is the beginning of the year data that you're looking at prior to any of this instruction going on.
Well, I was thinking historical.
Historical, yes.
Right, so not this year, because I know, it's only been.
Yes.
First quarter. I was thinking a historical perspective of how the programs in the district has done for our students. So I'm concerned about like the progress. So did we change a program in midstream? Is this, is there something new from what we used to do?
The Balanced Literacy and the Foundations is new from what we used to do, and the Foundations and the Balanced Literacy is a more robust approach to address those deficit areas, specifically in phonics, that will help increase the scores long-term.
So wouldn't that concern the science of reading?
Um, yes, a bit, but not as, not as specific, but as far as the reading specialists, they focus more on the Level Ones and teach children how to read. So we presented the Level Ones for you, and we also presented the core instruction, which is Level Tier Two and Tier Three, so it's a combination of both.
Okay, so you're thinking that this, this will be something that will improve those young people's reading scores?
Absolutely.
Especially K through, what is it?
Three. K through three, yes, and we will know more when we look at the middle-of-year data as we progress monitor. The teachers would know that right now, but as we progress monitor, we'll do that in about January, February, so we should see some improvements, but you see significant improvements more towards the end of year because you had a full year to implement this actual program, what we're doing.
And I ask this only because I'm concerned about the fact that we haven't risen in our standing in reading, because if you can't read, it's no use having ELA, right?
Correct. Well, one of the things that we were lacking, and anyone can jump in, Mary Beth, you could jump in, is the phonics piece was really lacking, and if you don't master the reading in K one and two, you're going to struggle grades three, four, five, six, and so on and so on, and we're spending a lot of money on the intervention, and under Dr. B.C.'s leadership, she's focusing more on the preventative piece so we don't have these issues. This is a long-term plan. So at the end of this year, it may not look too great, we're looking long-term.
How long?
Build and sustain.
I'm sorry, just how long?
Well, it's going to see, you're going to see some increases this year, but we want to see less, a lower number in the beginning of the year of students reading below level, so that's what we're looking to do.
And so by the end of this year, what are your projections for growth? If this program works?
We will have to look at the mid-year data to give a better gauge. We have some, set some goals for 70%, but we have a better gauge at the mid-year approach, and then we can make the adjustments that are needed based on that data.
And I know this is a difficult question because these are children from different levels, so I'm just, I appreciate you guys sharing this information with us as a community.
Yes, and this, and the questions aren't difficult, it's just, this is the reality of where we are, and you know, we need to see some movement really fast, and I know the expectations, so we have to really look at the data mid-year to see what adjustments we have to make. And sometimes their implementation adjustments is not necessarily the program, it's how it's being implemented by the teachers, and that comes with.
And we're glad that you asked our question.
Yes.
For the sake of transparency, because people have asked us individually, you know, you know, behind closed doors, what's the reading scores and all of that. So I mean, we jumped to it to present it because we had another program we called CKLA, and we realized that the kids were very short in phonemic awareness, and that was not happening because, I mean, for me, as a child growing up on phonics, where you know you have to pronounce the word, you know, and stuff like that, we realized that a lot of kids weren't, it wasn't successful there. So we changed it to Foundations, and that's why we see we are doing our best. I did all my research on Foundations, though it took me a while, but we eventually came up with it, though.
Thank you.
Maybe looking at pre-K or something that we can do with the pre-K kids so that that would maybe cut that off? Yes, and Dr. Gail White was telling here, there is a measurement that she has, that she's using to do as an early identifier, but you're right, we need to look at that early identifier and have our kindergarten teachers meet vertically with our pre-K teachers so they can see those gaps to catch it early. So that's something, you are correct. So as we build up the CNI department, these are some of the things that we're going to take into place. We're looking at all the initiatives that, that's coming across, across that, your table that you're passing, we're implementing, and we're monitoring as well, but we're definitely looking at that data, to, the data points, and multiple data points, not just this as well. We have report card data, we have the testing data when that comes out, we triangulate, and we look to see what is the best next move, because a lot of this adjustment, it's not just the implementation of the program, sometimes it's how it's being taught, the delivery of instruction as well. But again, you don't just, if it's not working right away, you don't just get rid of it, you just keep building upon it, you provide professional development, and you want to sustain it's a long-term plan.
And there's a part B to this, though. We're going to do another presentation as soon as the state allow us to present the, the scores on like from the three through eight in ELA, and we are waiting for that. We have the scores, but we can't put it out yet until we get permission from them to do that. So that's going to be part B for your question that you had asked. So, okay, so that's coming. Now, the second, the second presentation is going to be done by Dr. Kim Smith and Ms. Carol Delvailler, and it's also about the special ed students who need services and how these kids are going to get their services. So, Dr. Smith, Ms. Delvailler.
Good evening, board presidents, superintendent of schools, my fellow cabinet members, and Sorry about that. Okay, I want to begin by saying, this is the new reimagined special ed department. Reimagine, right? That's an honor, next page, please. That's an honor of our superintendent. That's one of her four Rs, okay? The new reimagined special ed department, it will be spearheaded by some wonderful colleagues. Assistant Superintendent of Administration, Climate, and Culture, Dr. Beverly Jones. Dr. Beverly Jones? Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Jamal Doggett. And our new Director of Special Ed, Ms. Carol Delvailler. Next page, please. Okay, so we have our director. We now also have our seven supervisors, and some of them have joined me today. I won't read all of their responsibilities, but we have this, this even, Dr. Joyce Corpus. And we have Ms. McKitty Bromley. Thank you. Okay, so I was posed three questions, and my charge, the first one being, how many, next slide, please, how many students did not get services? That's the first question. Second one, what are we doing about it? And lastly, when will these services be provided? In front of you, you have a chart. This chart reflects services that we will provide, the compensatory services for the year 2021, 22, and 2022, 23. We've outlined the schools that required this information, and you could see each its school, and I won't go over all of that, but district-wide, in terms of speech, is 198 students. That's 2,003 compensatory session that we need to make up. Counseling, we have to make up services for 31 students, that comes to 49 and a half hours. OT, that's four students, that comes to 38 and a half. And physical education, that's nine students, and that comes to 46 and a half. And lastly, resource room with 28 students, that come to 884 sessions. That's for the 21, 22 school year. For the 22, 23 school year, we have to provide compensatory services to 22 students, that's 403 sessions. For occupational therapy, it's three students, 13 and a half sessions. Physical education, two students, that's 26 compensatory sessions. Vision therapy, one student, 26 compensatory services. Hearing impaired, one student, that's one and a half hours. And lastly, resource room, 65 students for 2060. I'm here to assure you that all these services will be provided. We have, the, the students have all been assigned. We have, the, the students have all been assigned, and like I said, this is the new reimagined special ed. With that said, Carol Delvaie will provide the summary. She'll, she'll hit the ball out of the park.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank you, and I'm honored here to present in front of all you wonderful people. So, I'll be very brief. I just want to say that, uh, Dr. Smith did a fantastic job with the team. We did have an awesome team to help us pull this information for you tonight and for the community. We're going to be very transparent, but in regards to the question of providing the related service shortages that we're seeing, this is not an issue unique only to Mount Vernon School District. I came from a district on Long Island, and, um, we have encountered this across the nation. So, it's not, I want to say this because we were experiencing the same exact thing. So, as you know, the state is aware of, um, the shortage that we're, that we're experiencing. In particular, servicing students with special needs, it appears to be a result of the negative impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. It's interrupted instruction in general. Uh, this is often really to the lack of related service providers who are not able to make contact with students. Teletherapy did not work, um, and also the proximity of being in front of children, we all know that that does not work. Um, so that is sort of a trickle-down effect and the residuals of not having those services for this, for that year. So, I want to also say that, um, we are aware of this deficiency as, uh, Dr. Smith pointed out, and as you can see from the list that we have put together. And we've begun to take extreme measures by really making sure that we correct this action immediately because we do know that our students deserve and must have these services. So, we're going to make absolutely sure that we monitor and ensure that students at the Mount Vernon School District are given the services that they are required to have based on their IEP. You will begin to see the marked improvements in the areas pertaining through the following weeks and most definitely through this 22, 23 school year. We will keep you updated, um, in the next, you know, as we have the next meeting in a few weeks to let you know where we are, how we're doing so far with the makeups, and we are absolutely certain that we'll get this job done. So, I'd like to thank you for your attention, um, and I appreciate you allowing us this opportunity to explain to you and give you this information that is critical, um, for the community and for our families. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions?
So, um, so you have, you hired some new... New, um, special ed supervisors, right?
Yes.
So, um, how many do we have now?
Seven. We'll have seven on January 3rd when Dr. Kelly Ramsey joins us.
Okay, so what's the breakdown of schools per supervisor? How is that broken down?
Okay, we can go back to the slide. That one, go back. Okay, so, all of our supervisors will have under 300 students. It's all been broken down. Dr. Joyce Corpus, she will be responsible for CPSE, Hamilton, Mandela, the SEAT program, Seed, and Focus. Dr. Kelly Ramsey will have outer district, Grimes, and Parker. Ms. Michelle McKitty Bromley will have Trapp, Hagan, Graham, the Honor Academy, and Rebecca Turner. Lorraine Monroe will have Pennington, Benjamin Turner, Lincoln, and Denzel Washington. Latonya Collins has a Mount Vernon Leadership Academy, STEAM, Williams, and she also will do the, um, New York State Alternate Assessment Oversight. Cal and Davies, Mount Vernon High School Sundown Program, and she is responsible for IEP Direct. And lastly, Ms. Yolanda Kelly, she has parentally placed, and she's responsible for compliance beginning, um, with Judy Elliott, and we have a meeting with Judy Elliott next week. So, she'll help with the state reporting, state liaison, and partial hearing, and the New York State Support Plan.
And, and all of these supervisors have 300 kids or...
Less than.
Less than 300 students?
Yes.
Is that right? Because I would think the high school would have more student, the high schools would have more students than, more students to serve.
The high school with Sundown has 250, is 259.
And so, and so the supervisors are going to ensure that the, uh, programs that the, that the compensat, compensatory services are being met?
The supervisors has been very involved in, in providing the data that we need. We have spreadsheets that indicate the specifics about who needs what services, so they will be provided the services.
And so, and so you had, if you go back to the other org chart, you have, you have Ms. Jones?
Go, go back.
So, that's the responsibility of the supervisors. So, what's the responsibility of climate and culture? What can Ms. Jones do to enhance special ed?
Ms. Jones, did you want to take that?
Want to share with us your expertise?
Good afternoon, everyone. As, um, the individual who directly supervise, um, will supervise special ed, I bring to the table my expertise in, um, compliance, and my expertise in curriculum and instruction where that is concerned for, uh, special education, um, students. We all know that victory is in the classroom. We all know that these scholars, it's not about what they need to know, that should not be different from anybody else. It's about how they are taught. We, we, I, I bring that oversight to make sure our scholars are exposed to rigorous instruction with the appropriate support that's going to help them achieve at high levels. Um, these scholars can learn, they have demonstrated it in many ways, so therefore we are going to pay attention to what and how they are taught so that they can demonstrate, um, the knowledge and skills needed to be successful at the state level, the state exams.
Any other questions?
The two, the two gentlemen, they're not here yet. Mr. Coach Semino is on his way with them, so we're going to just keep moving, but I'm going to conclude the superintendent's report until, when they get here so that they can market their skills just for five minutes. So, I'm going to ask Madam President just to, just give us five minutes when they walk in, just for them to present what they're doing in their spare time.
All right, so we'll go to committee reports? Any committee reports, um, Trustee Gail?
Okay, so we met with Mr. Silver last week. This is a budget and finance committee, and...
Excuse me? Excuse me? I think you came in late. We already had our community, um, um, we start at 6:30. We, we start at 6:30. So, it's up to the board. Okay, all right. What's your name? Ms. Torresink, you have three minutes and then one minute to wrap up.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, good evening. I was here about two weeks ago, um, regarding my son and the security issues that were at Rebecca Turner, and I just came to follow up on it today. Um, I, excuse me, I spoke to Dr. Bennett Conroy, and she indicated that they would, um, hire more security guards or place more security guards in the school, and that has been done. I think I've seen about, well, I saw one extra one, but I think we have about three now, two more, two more. Um, I was also told that they would hire, or at least post a position for TAs to assist the teachers with the monitoring of the, monitoring of the hallways, monitoring of the hallways, and that we would, they would start hopefully installing the cameras and alarm systems on the doors possibly next week when they finish with the high school this week. I just wanted to confirm that and advise you all of that.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, we'll get an update, we'll get an update from Mr. Silver as far as the agenda. So, Mr. Gail, you can proceed.
No problem. Uh, we met last week in the 30th with Mr. Silver, the budget committee, and we was looking at some numbers, and we're going to be exploring ways of reducing costs in the district. So, I guess to subsequent meetings, we will be looking at different ways of cutting costs and hopefully, hopefully be more effective with our spending. Anything to add?
Thank you. Trustee Nent, anything from special ed from the meeting you were at Benjamin Turner, you and Ms. Trustee Adesobe? Okay. Trustee Adesobe, go. No, no, go ahead.
Thank you to Dr. Smith, too, able to move that agenda. I know things like it. Within an hour, we were in and out of 30 people there, and, um, she did a phenomenal job because they had a president elected, a treasurer, a vice president, and a secretary, and elected some dudes, send our dudes from parents, all within an hour. It was just amazing to, oh, I'm sorry, he's telling me to do, I had nothing to swear to him. He was telling me to use the mic. I'm out of my mouth. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you...
Okay, Dr. Smith, I just wanted to thank you. I think you did a marvelous job in moving the agenda for the parent meeting. Within the hour, you were able to, unexpectedly able to move that agenda to have a president, a vice president, a secretary, and a treasurer elected, in addition to collecting $10 joining fees from parents. So, it was marvelous. I think you should do a workshop on how to move an agenda. So, so, so thank you.
And I, and I might add that you had, you, you had, uh, who did you get to join, uh, as a secretary or something?
Uh, oh, the father who came in.
Yeah, the father.
I volunteered him.
Yeah, she volunteered the parent to do something.
Because he was getting ready to do a lot of complaining, and I figured, okay, well, this is good, I'm giving you something to do. And so, uh, hopefully that'll work out. I know Dr. Smith will keep her eye on him particularly, so thank you.
So, she's referring to the SEPTA meeting we had November 10th. So, that was very, it was well received.
It was.
Trustee Kelly?
Uh, I don't have a report. I was at the budget report, um, um, committee, sorry. Um, what I did have, I had the opportunity to visit Williams School, and I wanted to know, Dr. Bennett Conroy, um, I was concerned about some of the things that I saw. I did see the new gate, the fence, the, the fence by the, uh, access to the, uh, lolly columns and things that they're putting in. My concern is that when they put in the new gate, the custodial staff didn't have a key. Are you aware of that?
No.
No. Are you aware of that, Ms., okay? They didn't have a key to the, you know, the gate outside that slams, that has the, the bar? Okay. Yeah, there was an incident of them getting locked out. So, at least the head custodian should have a key. They did a great job on the weatherproofing of the steps. There are still, um, problems. Probably most, I think, urgent one, if it's a level one, it would be the intercom system. They don't have one. I understand it does not work. That concerns me because of the safety issues. In a large school like that, when you have a lockdown...
Order five, they're on their way.
I know, but, so when is, I, I want a timeline for that? When it's a, uh, I think it's very pressing. You have K through eight in that building and no intercom? If there's a, you know, lock, lockdown, or you have to stay in place, shelter in place? How do you, you, you have a buzzer on the door, no cameras. So, there's some concerns I have about the building, also the water backup, because I see a lot of deterioration in that area in the basement. But I was by the custodial break room, and there's a sump pump there that does not adequately, adequately, um, address the, the problems. And the other thing is, the elevator in the wing. What, what is the story with the elevator? I was told it was paid for, but they're just showing up to fix it now?
Good evening. The elevator has not been paid for, and the, uh, the, the state...
A rumor?
The state is regulating the installation of the elevator. There are some modifications that have to be made to the structure of the elevator shaft and outside of each landing before we're allowed to do it. Our architect is involved with the state education department in getting permission, getting approval to do what we need to do. Uh, the elevator cab is ready to go, but there's still a lot of electronics and renovations that need to be done because the old elevator was not really ADA compliant. And when you make a major renovation like this, it has to be completely compliant for ADA. And so, therefore, that was the change in the doorways and things like that. So, it's underway. We expect to get approval shortly from the state.
So, how long do you think it'll take before that's done?
I'll have to answer you tomorrow.
Okay. A number of other concerns as far as not having any cameras in that particular school, being in a area that, uh, is experiencing high crime.
Right. So, what happened is that we finished the high school today, and then we're going to start with Rebecca Turner next week, and then Williams will be third.
So, I can follow up in January on Williams?
But in December, we hope to finish the five.
Oh, so, okay. So, it should be...
We are trying to push that.
Pushing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially on the intercom, I think that that is unconscionable.
Well, that I'll find out tomorrow because we have ordered it, we have paid for it, and we were told it's on its way. So, what I'll do, I'll find out tomorrow exactly when it's going to be here, and then I could send an email out to all the trustees.
Okay, and so that would...
Are they going to have cameras outside, too?
Yes.
You know, I, I'm just concerned because I've heard the same issues about Williams up in October.
She did.
And it was the intercom system, and it was that elevator lift. And I'd asked that you do something to protect the children, to do something against the door, because a youngster had pulled on that door, so that we could just put something against the door so that the children cannot touch, actually physically touch that door.
The doors...
Those two concerns I had brought up in October, so here we are December, and we still don't have the intercom, we still don't have anything to protect the kids against the door. So, I mean, I think to protect the children against the door...
It was brought up last year, the intercom system, because sometimes it works and sometimes it last year worked.
Well, it's just, people are going to move, you have to get an intercom system.
Right.
They're going to get a new intercom system.
And I totally agree with you. We keep fixing up the intercom over there, fixing up piece, you know, piecemeal it all the time. So, now what we did, we just couldn't do that anymore. So, we ordered five brand-new intercom systems from the ARP funding. So, that's what is happening because we keep fixing it. You know, you fix, put something in, and it worked this week, and it doesn't work next week, and we got fed up of that. I just couldn't do that anymore because I keep getting the phone calls saying that kids are out in the rain, we don't have, so what we did, we just ordered five.
Hey, what about the door, though? The protect, protect the children from the door on that elevator lift? Like, if you walk in there, the door is readily available to anyone.
Can they board that piece?
Can't they do, okay.
Can't they board that up?
So, as I, tomorrow, I would definitely get in there and look at it myself.
Okay.
Because I know we have a, we talk about it in October, and I thought that we would be further on. So, what I'll do, as I always promise people, when something comes up, and I said I'm going to go here to get it done, I put my sneakers on, and I get in there, and I make sure it's done. Mr. Mr. Silver, do you have any...
My understanding is that there's plywood nail covering that landing all the time when they're not working. So, if, if you know something, I don't, I'm just...
No, there is no, when I was there, there was no plywood.
This was?
Last week.
Thursday?
Okay.
So, are there electrical problems in Williams?
The building condition survey, uh, has a, a large repair of the electrical system as part of the building condition survey. I didn't bring that with me tonight, but I'm happy to share that detail with you, but there's... I'm happy to share that detail with you. But there's electrical problems in almost all the buildings. That's, that's part of the $300 million in building condition repair that are on that list. I'm happy to get you that, that detail.
And the other thing, one more thing before I let you go. The other day, you had the construction people working on cutting the floor for new beams, and it set off the smoke alarm system. You know, that rainy day last week, and the kids were outside in the cold. And I want to know if that's permissible to have them doing that type of work during the school day?
It, it wasn't the problem that it was the work, it was the problem that they used a dry saw instead of wetting it, and they did not cover, uh, this was, this was dust, it wasn't smoke that, but you're, you're right.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is, they're doing construction. That was a mistake of the people who contracted, I understand that.
So there's, there's no more work during the school day there?
That's what I was concerned about.
That ended that day.
Okay, that, thank you.
One last thing for Williams School is the library. I brought this up in October also, that there's an alcohol in the library that the students cannot use because they have the heavy bookcases blocking that particular area. I mean, that's just, can we just get those, that bookcases moved?
So I was told that was moved some time ago. Uh, but I, again, I haven't been there in a couple of weeks, so I'll look. But I was told it was moved the day after you first raised it.
Is that the one you were talking about, Sabina?
Okay, let, let me speak on that, because I went over there the last time, and I saw it too, because I know the students want to use the back area, and I contacted two organizations in the, in Mount Vernon to come and take them, because we're gonna give it to them, because we don't have any other places here to, to store them. And we don't want to throw them out if somebody else is gonna use them. So next week, they told me that before Christmas, they were gonna come and move them. So what I'll do, I'll call them tomorrow, try them to give me a date, to move that section out, because what happened, they're gonna use it in their after-school program for their kids. So instead of throwing it away, I give it to somebody.
Sorry, someone...
I, I give it to somebody who's gonna use it, so that those, the kids can get that alcohol to, to, to work in.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes my report on my visit to Williams. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll save the rest for later.
Okay.
Trustee Lindsey, you have any, any...
No, my, uh, security meeting was canceled, so I don't have any updates on that. I mean, I talked to them.
I have one thing. The, um, the policy meeting, um, the Policy Committee met on November 17th. Uh, we talked about, um, policies, policies that we're going to, um, take, um, presidents over, and the policy development, and, um, merging of bullying and hazing policies, DSA policies, code of conduct, prohibited student conduct, personal expressions, and staff code of ethics. So we reviewed those policies, and we're going to adopt them, uh, at the January 10th Board Meeting. So that's what I had to report. Other than that, I don't have any other committee reports.
Excuse me, President Saunders, just one comment, not a report, but I went to the Honor Academy, um, PTA last Thursday, the first, and I would just like to encourage the public to join the PTAs of your schools that your kids go to. It's, I got some very useful information, and if we have more parents, um, participating, it would help with reading scores, behavior, a lot of issues. So I'm just encouraging the public to join the PTAs, even if your kids does not, I have no kids in this, in Honor Academy, but it's still helpful that you can find ways to help people that need help. So my, my plea to the public is just to join the PTAs of schools maybe in your area, to see what we can do to help the kids and the families that need, needs our help. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank the parent liaisons for decorating the, um, boardroom, the room. It looks very nice. Thank you. We just have to acknowledge, here's the, here's the basketball team. So we're gonna acknowledge Coach Semino.
Yes. So Coach Semino, could you please come right up to the front? We have been waiting for you. And the gentlemen, and you, the entrepreneurs. And by the way, Coach Semino, I saw you, 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 in the Lohad on Sunday, about you, and we want to congratulate you because you're the most winning coach of the year. Right, and you have three young men. So last week, no, two weeks ago, I went to the high school, and three young men approached me just to talk to me about what they do to curb violence. And I was so impressed by what they did, I said to them, well, I'll give you a little chance at the board meeting to talk about and share with other scholars what you have done. And also, we want to see your products. I'm not selling your products tonight, but I need to know that you have those products here, that we can look at them, and we will definitely, you know, I mean, patronize you as well. So you want to start by telling us what this project is all about?
Yes, I, I can. Oh, um, I kind of don't want to, like, face my back to you. I feel like that's disrespectful.
Yes.
Um, so is that right here fine?
It's fine.
All right, okay. Um, good night, everybody. My name is Jayden Firon. These are my two associates. This is Elijah Morris. This is Tristan George. Um, we play Mount Vernon basketball. We love it. Um, tonight, we are here to, um, we're here to promote our brand, and we're here to promote our message. Um, our brand's name is Elite Class. The three stands for all three of us. It's a brotherhood, you know, it's just family. As one, you know, family is everything. So the message we're trying to promote tonight is that, um, there's another way in Mount Vernon to make money and to prosper other than violence. So we want... So, um, we want, our main motive is to make people look good for less, and also to let people know that we don't have to resort to violence. We can pick up a side hustle. We all cho, us three chose basketball, and we also decided that we should pick up something else. So we, um, we thought of entrepreneurship, and so far, we're doing really good. We're blessed to, um, come and speak for, um, our superintendent. Thank you so much. And so our hats are $15, right? Our hats are $15. These are, these are sweatsuits, these two. We also have two more colors, uh, blue and a pink. Um, those are dropping on the 14th though. We apologize. So, um, the hats, we, our thing is, we make on demand, so everybody's able to preorder them, and you can eat, you can either come and pick it up for $15, or we can deliver it to you for $24, right? So I'm just going to pass it off to my associates. They're gonna tell the, tell you guys what they do, and yeah, from there.
Hi, I'm Elijah, um, senior captain for the basketball team. I just wanted to say thank you for the superintendent for bringing us here today. Um, I basically, I make designs. Um, I also do sales. I kind of make sure everything's running smoothly, see what the customer would like. Um, I kind of hear from everybody around the school. Um, maybe this doesn't look too good, or this doesn't look too good, or maybe we should put this. I listen to the people. Um, I also do customer service. If your order's not there, or something's wrong, you can hit me up. Um, yeah, that's basically something that I do. Um, yeah.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Tristan George, um, class of 2022. Um, so for the business, I'm pretty much the social media manager. I post order of the new, the new designs on Instagram, um, which is Elite Class Apparel. That's our Instagram, if you guys want to follow. It greatly appreciated. Um, and so right now, I, I'm not here to be as hands-on as I would like to, because I, I'm, I'm recording a school in North Carolina. So I'm taking the stuff down there, showing my teammates, associates, um, our hats and the sweatsuit designs, and hopefully they'll, you know, buy it, and it'll expand, pretty much.
Thank you.
So my part of the, um, job, this is a job, my part of the job is, I do all the statistics. So I'm the one that figures out all the numbers. I figure out how much profit we will gain if we charge $15 for a hat compared to $10 for a hat. Um, I'm one of the people that makes sure that we have good quality products, you know. They make the designs. I'm the one that goes and finds the products. I'm the one that figures out what print we should use, what colors, all that. And, yeah, that's pretty much what I do. Um, we would love if anybody has any questions, though.
I have a question. Where do the profits go?
Um, so...
Is there a club?
Is there a what?
Is there a club? You said curb violence. You do curb violence. Is there, what organization are you working with?
Um, so what we do right now, all of, all of our profit, we don't really make a profit. Because, no, no, it makes sense, though. All of our profit, it goes right back into the brand, so we can expand and get better. So we have to, to make the product, we have to travel, uh, half the distance to make the product, you know. And it's not too easy every time, but we always find a way to prosper through adversity, anything that happens.
Jayden, I have a question. I have another question. Is there a school store that your product's available in?
Um, no, there isn't a school store as of now. Right now, it is just a, it's an open end. So anybody that can get in contact with our Instagram or get in contact with on any one, two, three of us, they can come to us with cash, a Cash App or Zelle, and they can order a hat.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I kind of want to comment. I just kind of want to give a testimonial of a happy customer of Elite Class. Um, I ordered a hat from them. They are very professional. And I just want to say, these guys are so inspiring, seeing them on the basketball court, state champions, and then also in the community, trying to help us. And, um, you know, they're role models. We see them. Um, so we love seeing them inside and outside the community, making an impact.
Thank you. We appreciate it. You got a question, right?
Do you have a, are you incorporated? Do you have a company name, LLC, whatever? Do you do anything?
No, as of right now, we're a newly founded business. So, and before we make an LLC, we want to make sure that our brand is solid. We want to make sure that people are gonna keep investing in, in us, so we can keep investing in them, before we make it a actual corporate. So we don't want us, our profit, not profit, but our stock to keep to this drop, but we have an LLC, so it kind of wouldn't make sense. So at this rate, we're coming with, coming out with an LLC really soon, and hopefully the next two weeks, and then we'll be a, a actual organization.
Yeah, I just want to, um, I just want to commend you, you brothers on doing, uh, doing what you're doing. I think it's great. Uh, that's what Mount Vernon is about. You know, we take things from nothing and turn it into something. So as you guys being athletes as well as entrepreneurs, you're gonna go places, man. And always wear the Mount Vernon brand on your back wherever you go.
Thank you.
All right.
So you need to leave us, you need to leave us with some way to contact you, to reach out. I don't do, I don't know anything about Instagram.
Okay, um...
Three Life, Three Life, right?
Oh, um, we're definitely coming out with flyers. We're definitely gonna make a website coming soon. Um, hopefully in the next week, we're making a website. But if you would like any of our numbers, you could con, you could contact us there, if that's easier for, for you. Or if you could, if you would like, you could contact Coach, or if you could contact the, um, the superintendent, and she could contact Coach Semino, and we could get you your hat. Don't worry, we could get you a hat, too.
I can get Coach Semino.
But you say you on, um, Instagram and Facebook?
We are only on Instagram right now.
Which is, what is it, Three Life?
Yeah, Three Light Class Apparel.
Three Life Class.
Well, it's Elite Class, but the three, L.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having all of us.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Mr. Coach, do you want to say anything about this?
Good job.
Just that it's a pleasure to watch them. Uh, they, they work so hard, uh, on the court and in the classroom. And, you know, when I heard what they're doing, it's pretty cool to watch them take steps, and, uh, they get it. This is, uh, Mount Vernon's in good hands for the future.
Oh. Coach Semino, I think we all just continue to salute you. I particularly salute you. My Chris Lo, my grandson, you were really instrumental in getting him into UMass. He got a degree there. He went to, uh, he's been all over the world playing basketball. Well, he was in Slovakia, Lithuania, all those Baltic area countries that we don't know much about. And now he's assistant coach at, um, St. Bonaventure University. So we owe you a big thank you. Cash in the bank.
Thank you very much, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank superintendent and the board for, uh, where we're going next week.
Yes.
Hawaii.
I wish I was going.
Four, four games in Hawaii next week.
Yes.
I imagine they'll be selling some hats on Waikiki Beach.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Coach. Thank you, gentlemen. I really do appreciate you. And if you hang around for a little bit later, I will speak to you. But if not, then I will call Coach tomorrow and get in touch with you guys. But thank you so much for so, you know, inspiring all the young scholars in our district. Okay? Thank you.
So we have one more trustee, uh, trustee Ray Adams. Do you have a committee report? Tell us what you're doing. Anything?
Well, I guess the biggest thing is that Mount Vernon Steam Academy is about to become a no-place-for-hate school. So coming up soon, we're gonna have a big kickoff celebration and have everybody sign it, and, you know, keep pushing this anti-bullying, anti-violence, anti-everything in Mount Vernon.
That's great. Thank you. So that completes committee reports. So we'll go right on to O business. Any O business? I think we did that with the elevators, huh?
She took care of that one.
Okay. And the cameras, and, um, we did all that. Any other O business? I had a question about, um, HR.
HR?
HR?
Marcy.
Marcy. So, um, I don't know, I got a few calls from people that said they applied for positions, and they don't get a call. How does, how does that work? Do you, do you normally just, um, do we normally just, um, call people, interview them, and then once we get someone, we don't reach out to whomever's left on the list? How does that work?
So that is kind of how it happens. Um, I was over the council, and I'm not sure if it's true or not. So, to, um, at least, we have a conference. Love beer, and the process of the honor. Hello? Oh, it was on already. Um, so at times, that is possible. So as I was saying, when I was over the school counselors, and I screened resumes for the principals to interview candidates, uh, we had one vacancy, and we had 600 applicants. So sometimes we do get a large number of applicants who apply for positions. We do try to, if we do interview people, then send them a letter and say, you know, we've selected a candidate. Nonetheless, we are in the process of moving to a new system, um, for applications, and for HR overall. As you know, we're going towards paperless. With this system, what we'll be able to do, once we tag in there that a candidate has been selected, the other candidates will receive emails stating this position has been filled. So this way, people aren't just sitting there waiting and not knowing. Um, but what happens also when principals or whomever has the vacancy in their, in their school or in their department, when you screen resumes, and I know this because I've screened them at times, sometimes people apply for positions for which they're not certified. So for example, I, I probably could show you five or six people that applied for like 10 different positions, right? So they might be certified as an elementary teacher, but they might apply for elementary, principal, assistant principal, everything that they can think of. So they're not considered for some of the positions for which they don't qualify for. And so you screen resumes, and the principal, the person with the vacancies, they screen the resumes, they select who they're going to interview, and then...
So, so, um, so with cleaners, I think with people that, um, apply for facility positions, cleaners, custodians... positions, cleaners, custodians, so the, um, I know you had mentioned before, the, um, the principals are the ones that put it in OLOS, right, and the principals are the ones that, um, do, do the interview, so when is it, when does facilities come in and get involved with the applicant, because maybe Graham School has it open and someone doesn't like that person, but the person at Hamilton may like that person, so I think you should be open to all candidates for facilities, so I think, is that the only department that doesn't get interviewed by the department?
No, so they, facilities interviews, or B and G, or specifically director of facilities, interviews for positions for this building, right, so, or for all the B and G, um, maintenance mechanic, uh, painter comes from here, for the custodians and head custodians, now we're out of a list, but we had a list before, and so the principals didn't even go to OLOS, because you have to exhaust the list when you have candidates who have taken the test and qualify, so they did those interviews, when I sent out the list in my email to the principals, they were asked specifically to invite the director of facilities or to invite their assistant, and I, and in the email, I named them by name, so they are asked when they hold their compact to have those people, so like I said, when I was over guidance, I screened the resumes as the counselor, as the head of guidance, and I said, principals, these are some qualified candidates that I think you should interview to assist them with the process, and then they ran their compacts, they selected the parent, they selected the community member, the teachers, et cetera, and I was invited also, and there were times that I didn't screen the resumes for them, and they screened resumes for themselves.
Has it always been like that, though, or was it, did it just start?
So, there was an issue with facilities, specifically under CSEA, where the interviews were taking place here, and then they were assigning custodians and head custodians to buildings and cleaners, while in the contract for CSEA specifically, they're the only contract that states it, there must be a building level compact, so it has to take place at the building, um, and also we do believe that it is best practice that the principal is involved in selecting the person, because if I, all of a sudden, if next door, you know, Mrs. Merrill has an issue with her head custodian, and I send them over to Graham, and then they're a problem for Dr. Hunter McGregor, if she doesn't like them, then she's gonna call me to move them, but if she interviews the person, right, then she is going to work with her selected candidate, or if the person at Holmes applies to go to Graham, because when there is a vacancy, I have allowed people internally to apply for that vacancy, perhaps they're not happy where they are, right, so then when they get there also, they selected to go there, but if I send them to Graham or Lincoln or the high school and they hate it, they're gonna come back and tell me, move me, and I may not have a place, so with each vacancy we have, there's an internal posting, so internal candidates who are already entitled can apply to go to a different school if they wish, and the principals can consider them, and also external candidates, if there's a list, we use the list, we do not post on OLOS, we use the list if there's a certified list from CSEA, at this time, the list is exhausted, so there's a provisional posting for custodian or head custodian.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Answered my question, thank you.
Actually, may, may I just ask, cause you were talking about the facilities, when it comes to the different positions, um, actually I have a question for specific position, um, how, how does an interview go, I, I, I know someone who had interviewed, so I kinda do know how it goes, um, how does an interview go for a facilities person coming in to be interviewed, uh, to test their skills, to test what they know, to test if they're just walking off the streets with no qualifications, do they, on an interview, do they question?
So I do not sit on every interview in the district, I am the last person to see candidates, uh, they're sent to me recommendations to hire, so that is why the positions that are interviewed out of this building are done by facilities, those are district-wide positions, right, those are the maintenance mechanics, the carpenter, painter, I'm assuming that that's what they do, when I interviewed for counseling, I'd ask questions related to counseling, when we interview for math, or, you know, literacy, you interview in general, to see if you're a good fit for the district, for the building, as well as your knowledge on the background, I don't know the specifics-
It wasn't directed entirely, I'm just trying to get-
Yeah, I, I don't know the specifics in that interview, but that's why for those positions, it is slightly different than for the, I don't have a principal-
Mm-hmm.
-who's not running buildings and grounds, interviewing for a maintenance mechanic, they interview head custodians and custodians and cleaners who are working in their buildings, who are also on list, so they pass tests, which demonstrates they have some knowledge, but also I do ask that they invite someone from buildings and grounds to sit on their compact, so I don't know what happens in the compact.
Yeah, just, just asking, cause I was-
If someone told you, you probably know more than I do.
No, actually, they didn't, they didn't tell me that much, and I'm just, that, I was wondering, cause I could've, in the last few months, I think I saw a maintenance tech hired as provisional, which I believe means they, I don't know how, do you know how many maintenance techs we've hired in the last few months?
So we hired two maintenance mechanics and a maintenance carpenter.
Mechanic, excuse me.
Yes, and so at this time, provisional means that there's no established list, at this time, the position is considered competitive, the civil service is working on, and hopefully it'll happen at the next commission meeting, to move that position from competitive to non-competitive, and if it moves to non-competitive, then there will no longer be a test, because the person over them, the maintenance foreperson, is non-competitive, and in other civil service municipalities, it's a non-competitive position, but it was competitive in Mount Vernon, so they're gonna work to change it, but provisional means that there's no established certified list, the person hasn't taken the test, when there is a test given, they must take the test, and they must be immediately reachable.
Mm-hmm. And what about if, and I'm asking, cause I just know this person, is, if they came in and they had, they've passed that elsewhere, does that, you know, that they, they obviously have passed a civil service test showing that they're a maintenance mechanic?
It does not, it does- It's okay, can you hear me? Oh, it's back, okay, um, no, because Mount Vernon has their own civil service commission, so for Mount Vernon, only Mount Vernon's test qualifies, what it will tell us is they have a good chance of passing, and that they likely have some knowledge, and so they should be a strong candidate, but it doesn't guarantee anything.
Understandable, yeah.
And that test doesn't transfer.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. Before I turn it off.
I think I'm good, any, everybody, anybody else, good, questions? So we're gonna move on? Yes, please.
Can I have her, a motion for, on the human resources, five point one, human resources seventy-two A for certified?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for five point two, approval of human resources resolution, non-certified, classified?
Approval of human res, abstract, evaluation-
I don't know why.
Assistant superintendent-
Why is, I don't know why it's doing that.
Submitted by-
Come on, Bita.
Doctor Wade Line Bennett Conroy, superintendent of the school.
Hit the volume.
I don't know what happened. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion out there.
Okay, so, let's try it again, can I have a motion for approval of human resources resolution, classified?
I don't know if I should, I don't, I'm gonna say something, okay, motion?
Okay, I need a second. I need a second, motion? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for five point three, authorization to approve appointment of school district treasurer? I need a, motion. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Can I have a motion for five point four, authorization to renew the contract for athletic trainer?
I have a motion.
Can I have a second? Questions, concerns, discussions?
There were questions about this because it was just a contract, and you said it was something, um, from last year?
Mm-huh.
It was renewed?
Mm-huh.
So this was, um, so she's been renewed every year? So why, why are we just getting it now?
Sometimes it happens.
Are there any certifications, are there any certifications for this position?
It was just a contract, there was any backup?
She's certified, but she's been with the district since two thousand sixteen, it's just an annual renewal for her.
So the certifications don't have to be renewed?
Certifications are from the state?
Right.
Depending on your level of certification, they don't have to be, like I have permanent, mine are good forever.
Right, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for six point one, curriculum and instruction, authori, authorization to hire staff for the Mount Vernon Aquatic Facility, January to June twenty twenty-three?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Oh, go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Doctor Bennett Conroy, you gonna, uh, open up more days for the community to use the pool?
It's a good thing you asked that question, because my kids are hounding me, and they're coming in tomorrow to get some final answers from me as to when that is going to happen, so you kinda preempt those kids coming in tomorrow, but yes, I'm working on it, the only thing that is keeping me up is the buses, because I have to get buses to bring some of those kids, you know, from one school to the other, to go over there so that they can take part in, in learning how to swim, so as soon as I work that piece out, you know, the cheapest way, then I can make that happen, and I hope to make that happen by, to be honest with you, by next week.
Okay, so when I had asked, I don't remember the meeting, but I had asked about the bus passes, and I was told that the kids had access to the bus pass?
Yes.
Free bus pa, that doesn't qualify?
It's not free, it's not free-
Well, the district provides.
Okay, the district provide the bus pass fifty percent off, but what I'm having for these kids, they won't be paying anything for the buses, to go there.
Is that like the sports bus, bus, is that like the sport bus that picks kids up from-
Yes.
Washington, something be like that?
Yes, so I'm trying to work something out with them, because, you know, I still have to pay them.
There was an issue with the buses, I know Renew, uh, was trying to get buses from the Steam Academy, is that bus issue resolved?
Yes, the issue was resolved, and it also wasn't really a district thing, they were just really lacking in bus drivers and this, yeah.
That's the same problem, yeah, go ahead.
But I'm not lacking in bus drivers, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to do is to settle the bill, that's what I'm having, I have the bus drivers, I have the buses, but I have to negotiate, because there are so many kids who want to be part of the program, and I want to give the kids as much, being an avid scuba diver, I love the water, and to see my kids cannot swim, they'll go to the beach and they will be on the sand, and can't get to the water when they express that to me because they don't know how to swim, it breaks my heart, and I've been promising them from last year that we're gonna get these programs up and running to teach them how to swim, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for six point two, authorization to revise resolution to hire staff academic power hour after-school program?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
What, what happens that we keep getting revisions for this power hour? I mean, I thought we voted on this already.
The names, I think they're moving the names around.
Listen, no, let me tell you what happened, is that you have more kids signing up, so we have to have more teachers, and sometimes we have a teacher who said, I'm gonna do power hour, but in the middle of it, he said, I can't, because I have some other family issues, so we have to get somebody to come in, so that's why you keep, and I said to, um, to, um, Dr. Doggett, it's annoying to keep putting it in and out, and in and out, but it's for the kids' sake, so we have to do it, it's not about us, it's about them.
I was, I was just curious, cause I thought, once we voted, I understand now, it's a personnel issue.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for six point three, authorization to revise No Place For Hate School Team?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for seven point one, school improvement, authorization to approve Educate LLC to provide coaching for Our Lady of Victory?
Motion.
Second. I need a, and who was second? Okay, questions, concerns, discussions?
Can I just have clarification on exactly what they're, what, what's the program?
This is, this is a program that, um, Lady, Lady of Victory has in their building, and this is from their Title I money, you know, that all the schools from the area who participate in Title I funding have to get a certain amount of money, they don't get the money, what they do, they get the program, and then we pay whosoever they get, that the group, the organization.
Okay.
So, so they do like after-school or-
But I'm saying, what is, what is the exact, what is the program exactly, I, I kinda read it, and I kinda half-understand it.
Okay, that, for coaching, well, they provide coaching to the teachers.
Okay.
Do you vet-
Certain areas, specific areas?
It's always curriculum and instruction.
Okay.
So does Dr. Doggett oversee that program, the, uh, when they select those programs?
No, that's their stuff, we don't, we don't-
When it's an independent school, we just provide the funding.
Exactly.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for seven point two, authorization to revise staff for the Gifted and Talented Curriculum Alignment Committee?
Motion.
Need a second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for seven point three, authorization to approve Reach LLC to provide DTSDE district-led reviews, MVHSTSI reviews, FACE coaching, and balanced literacy and curriculum implementation for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year?
I just-
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
So, BC, can you explain this again, because I know she came in and, she came, Monica came in and told us about this program, and we just had a presentation about balanced literacy, and it's not, it doesn't seem that our students are, um, above grade level, but this is what she, so what they do is they give professional development to our, to our- But this is what she, so what they do is they give professional development to our teachers?
Yes, but remember, balanced literacy is not the program that they use for reading. We have the CKLA and all of that, so that's not their program. They just come in and provide supplemental help to the teachers, and as well as the administrators who are over these programs in the buildings. So that's what they do, they don't deal with the kids, they deal with the.
They do the professional development.
Yes, exactly.
But my question is, because they've done the balanced literacy in the past, and it doesn't seem as our students are up, grade level has increased, I think it went, I think they only went up, what, 40%?
When they came in, they were like 12 or 13%, and we went up to 47%. So, and that's what they're doing, the supplemental piece. So we moved from 12 to 13, and that is when we get off the list, when we brought them in. Because remember, when you get off the list, it doesn't mean to say you're doing well. It means that you are not in the bottom 5 or 10% of people who are failing. So we still have a far way to go, because as she saw you on the chart, when she came in, our kids were raising at 12% and 13%. So now it's 47. So now our push is that, let us reexamine our programs, and we realized that the CKLA was not doing phonics, and thus we changed it to foundations. So we're going to see how much we can push to make sure that we get at least 70%, you know, at reading level by June. We are trying.
May I ask, how many years have we used Reach, then?
We have used Reach like around, maybe, I think it's five or six years, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Long time.
And then my question would be pertaining to that, because I mean, I certainly listened to the program that she presented, and I've done research on this about what they actually do, and they seem to stick with the whole balanced literacy, which kind of goes back to some faulty teaching skills that are taught, and that may have something to do with our scores.
No, well, I would, okay, I wouldn't exactly say that, because balanced literacy is not a program. Balanced literacy is not a program. Balanced literacy is more or less like a resource that you use supplementally. But the program that we have in the building was the CKLA that addresses the phonics and all of that, and we have Mr., Dr. Doggett, the program that we are using in the building for curriculum and instruction is.
He said foundations, with something with foundations?
Foundation, we just bring that in, right. So we were using journalism and scholastics, that's what we did, that's the program we have.
Okay.
Journalism and scholastics, and collections.
And I always applaud Dr. Doggett, because I always like to read how much he does, he does.
Yeah.
Whenever I'm reading what I would consider, from my background, a daily, but it's probably a weekly, I'm always, if I haven't commended you lately, I always see how much you do, and I'm always impressed. So my question then would be, because this guy is very impressive, and he's obviously on top of his game with doing certain things, if we have the fantastic Dr. Doggett, why do we have Reach?
No, because Mr. Doggett doesn't provide that, provide balanced literacy. He's just learning, he's learning.
Which is a good thing.
Well, he's learning, he's getting, he's been trained.
Learning's not the good thing, it's, he doesn't provide balanced literacy. According to everything I've learned, that is a good thing.
Well, Mr. Doggett, you could speak to it yourself.
You're right. Balanced literacy is an approach to reading, and Monica is trained in that, she was trained through Teachers College to implement it. It's a new approach to reading that she's bringing to the district. So as she brings that approach with the materials and things that we have, my job is to make sure I set up the structures and support to drive that learning into the schools. So basically, what we do, we set up the curriculum, we have now Rubicon Atlas, we add all that information, and Monica doesn't take care of that, she does the training. And then what we do is we implement it, we provide to PD, we put a professional development plan together, and we work alongside with Monica, she does that with her consultants, and then we follow with the principals, and we follow with the lead teachers as well. And this was done, prior to me arriving in this position, it was done, it was done in phases. So everyone was not doing balanced literacy as a whole, we were doing bits and pieces and pockets of it, including myself and my building. But now this holistic approach is that now we're fully implementing in all the schools K to eight, and that's where the training comes in. So I basically monitor and implement the training, we couple that with the reading scores, we couple that with the beginning, middle, and end of year data to assess, to see how our program is working.
And as I say, I applaud you, I'm not questioning anything that has to do with.
I understand.
What you do, you're, you're great, no questions. I'm merely saying, from listening to other people, from reading about it, balanced literacy seems to be founded in the whole language technique, which has been kind of debunked as being no science whatsoever compared to traditional teaching of reading. But I'm just a layperson, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Any more questions?
Any more questions? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, opposed? Who was opposing?
Aye.
Aye.
Who else? Just one of them. Do you trust the committee? Saunders, opposed?
Everybody's opposed.
Okay. Motion does not pass.
Still, every time.
Can I go on?
I have it on.
Can I have a motion on the Student Services 8.1, approval of Student Services, Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 10, dated December 6, 2022?
Motion.
Okay, so I have, let me see, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on the Business Office 9.1, approval of general funds transfer 2022-2023, dated December 6, 2022? Motion. Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a concern and a question about the electrical services.
Mr. Silver?
Electrical, yeah. What exactly are they? And where are they performing these services at?
So, which one of these transfers are you referring to?
You have one here for me.
E and G contractor services?
Okay, so that's where the money's coming from.
Okay.
The money's going to repair fire alarms. We're required to have separate codes for these separate things.
So you're taking it out of electrical and putting it into the?
Yeah, it's kind of the same thing, but the state requires us to have distinct codes for these type of services.
Changing the code?
Removing it from one code to another, yes. From 411, 411 to 4,000.
And so what happens to the electrical, like, since the funds are being moved, what happens?
Well, there's other places, there's another code, 1621, where there's also electrical services.
Were you moving from architectural fees? Is that what the next?
So, are you on the next one now?
No, no, I'm saying, is that how it works, that you take from one, you rob Peter to pay Paul?
Well, we wouldn't take it from a place unless we thought we weren't going to need it for this year through the end of June. So that 100,000, we need to do the, we need to do the fire alarms now, that certainly cannot wait. And so we're anticipating that we will have sufficient funds in the electrical to manage that.
So then there's still funds being transferred into the, I guess, it's the same company, but it doesn't say electrical?
That's correct.
Is there a reason? I'm just trying to understand the fund transfer.
It's just a question of state coding.
No, no, I'm saying, but you, well, okay.
It's just, it's just a minor, minor move. I suppose we could have, we could have bought the service out of the other one, but we're trying to keep things in the place where they really belong.
Okay, all right, I'm just, I'm just.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.2, approved purchase order increase slash reduction for 2022-2023, December 6, 2022? Motion. I need a, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And that ends it for the resolutions.
That concludes our December 6 school board meeting. We will enter an, I have to, I need a motion for executive session.
Motion.
For the purposes, for the purposes of. To discuss pending litigation.
Can I have a, let me, let me do a motion. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of exploring sediment and personnel issue and discussing the pending litigation? I just need a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
We will not be back.